Alright, well, I'll call meeting order and we'll stand for the plug while you do this.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for the free and the best of the prior. The Salamaca City Central School District acknowledges the homeland of the Ananda Waka, the people of the Great Hill, the Seneca people on whose ancestral and modern day land Salamaca School District now stands and whose water we enjoy. We stand with all indigenous peoples and their resolve to remain connected to their land. While we cannot undo what has been done, it is the goal of the Salamaca City Central School District to recognize that history and make improvements that will benefit the next seven generations of indigenous students. At this time, I would ask that we please remain standing for a moment of silence for those students and individuals who perished an accident over the weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beeler. Evening, folks. Terry John, Vice President sitting in for Teresa Rae, President of the Board. She's on vacation, so you get me tonight and my esteemed colleagues to be right over here. Start off with the approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to be implemented?
There are a couple of changes. We added item six D, which were just some members to the Board of Education Committees. Item six F, we added the bid for the shuttle van. Six G, a bid for the Microsoft SharePoint. And then item seven A, paper was missing to the backup packet for Mr. Khan. And in item eight D, we made note of the change of location for our next board meeting, which is August fifteenth. That board meeting will be held at Prospect Elementary School in the new addition.
Okay, awesome. So I need to abort the agenda. Second by Ted, seventh by Dale. All in favor?
Hi.
Vote. Okay, would you care? Alright, we'll move on to public communications and Title VI Parent Advisory Committee. Any, no, I see hearings here. Any updates for Title VI?
Just real quick, yeah, actually we're going to update our last couple of meetings and I think we are upcoming, I can see more and a lot better updates on our audit meeting with, we think, every review of summer, but around this school year, but the big thing that kind of appeared today is if you guys have seen items four on the agenda, under the Asian Center Guide, is actually are here for our capital approval for the Albuquerque NIA that we've been chatting about last few times here. So yeah, just kind of sitting in, hopefully, you know, get that approval. It's just pretty usual, I mean, Roger started getting any pressure from business office for watching what comes next couple of weeks, hoping for all of us to go and yeah, we're just really excited and proud of our team to get this far and to be able to hopefully bring that back to the I can see.
Okay. Great, thank you. Great. I'll move on to central office message.
I don't really have anything. Nothing. My old calendar, oh, the article about the CEP for, you know, free meals again and a couple of things that we're going to be doing, which I'm curious. I guess, well, I do have a kind of a big thing. Beneath the board meeting, National Indian Impact of Schools Association meeting will be held in Buffalo. And I've arranged for Friday to take them up to Niagara Meat Field to see the Tuscarara School, to go into Lake Shore Schools to see their buildings and to go on down before they come down here and have guided tour at the museum. And then tour our buildings and then we're providing some traditional food for dinner for the, the board and their guests and that's happening on Friday.
Awesome.
So hopefully you guys there, anybody that can make it, come on down.
Sounds like a good menu.
Yeah.
Alright. Well, custom and tradition, every time I run the meeting, I look at the audience, oh, yeah. Chris, let's fire it off. What do you got for us?
So, uh, it's amazing how fast summer goes. I mean, we're already near the end of July and it's like schools didn't start in rather soon, so there's still a lot of work to be done. We are finishing up some of our key hires for some of our vacant portal positions. Just a couple of TA positions that we built. Then Mr. Wong's going to talk about maintaining a little bit later, she's one of our TAs that we're going to be, that's being appointed tonight. Summer school has been off to a fast start. Summer lunch program so far has been going pretty outstanding. They have about fifty to sixty lunches that we're serving that. We've already had a number of students go through our Apex Credit Recovery Program, earn credits already for as far as the summer school is all. It's been a bit of a challenge, changing doors, entering this way, entering that way, but everybody's been, been really good and flexible and adaptive.
Coming right down. So first time I was able to attend the NAC Conference, National Academy of Finance, that was absolutely spectacular. So thank you for allowing me that opportunity. And you'll be hearing more about that in your future as we launch our, our Academy of Finance. At the beginning of summer, I was able to attend a PD building picking classroom, especially phenomenal in-house PD with our math department, applicable across curriculums, but right now they're focusing on math. If you get a chance to bend in here or inquire about it, it's, it's pretty engaging and exciting. We had some teachers visit a neighboring school this past week. I was looking forward to visit. Unfortunately, I was sick, but we forged through, our staff went and visited a school to inquire about E-hall pass. It's something that we're looking to potentially bring here and help refine our pass system. And then lastly, this might be the last update, other than maybe a grand opening, playground has been turfed. I believe the concrete pad that makes it ADA acceptable was put in this past week, if I'm not mistaken. So I bet this is going to be my favorite playground out of all of them. So, thank you.
Awesome. Marcy?
We are currently following maintenance around the district and reinstalling all the classrooms and when everybody back up, then they're going to have the set. We are building out K, four and eight devices for each and every child. So if they enter, they get a brand new device at each one of those grade levels. So it's our replacement schedule. They will be moving to Windows eleven. So I will be replacing the adult devices for those grade levels as well and moving them into Windows eleven. Those, those are on the same page. Um, writing updates and moving all devices. We apparently have kindergarten through eighth grade devices, it's in-house. So I've got a couple of kids that are running updates on every device and moving it to the next grade level. Cleaning up systems in general, making things more smooth for the summer. We've got our schedule in place. Last year it was mid-August and we were panicking because we didn't have kindergarten devices in-house and kindergarten devices are currently sitting in the light. So we are, we are well on our way to being ready for September. Then we're going to take a break.
Awesome. Levi, what do you got for us?
On Friday, we rolled over the power schools to the next school year. So all the students were advanced, the students who have graduated. Chris and I have been working the past week with our rep from Area One to make sure that all the state reporting and everything has been fine tuned and, you know, to get ready to upload, make sure we upload it to Level Zero. Just working away at the thirty-six page calendar that goes out to the staff and families for next year. Getting all the dates and events scheduled and keeping them in the books. Having a good summer, so, right?
Awesome. Eric, you have anything else? You already, you already had a turn, so.
No, I mean, I'm, it's just been really nice actually to have, have him, you know, he's so proactive about that, you know, reaching out to, to me and everyone about those dates. I was able to give them like every date for the whole of the year. He's, you know, able to work the both and everything. So just being again part of our team, part of our team and everything I always change with everyone, you know, making it, you know, even people, we don't even need to for other people. So I think that kind of sports works. I just appreciate it. I'm not going to bother anyone, you know, all, everyone actually.
Awesome. Keep bothering them. Right. Vicky, what do you got?
Uh, Saturday for summer school going great. We have about fifteen students showing up each morning with big now, with big, I didn't, they're kind of on. That's going really smooth. Summer is a huge time for planning and organization and being ready for next school year. So we had a bunch of team leaders and representatives from our department last week, met with Aaron and I, and they had to do a lot of things for next school year. So they're really excited. Yeah, so we're hiring composition. So I feel like we've had a lot of interviews and questions and different things going on. And he's kind of a player here.
Awesome. Eric?
Uh, I probably believe that next week, I feel like summer's flown by. Um, it's been nice having a little bit of quiet in the building. So really, that's me a lot from other things that we need to hear for next year. And also seeing each day from grade that in the building is student. Set me off a little bit, what you just said, we met with team leaders and those things that we're really trying to like build on is our overall like culture and climate and building in some more positive expressions of recognition for attendance and grades and growth and character and behavior and all of those things. So working with team leaders to figure out what we want to look like and the celebrations we want to do, building monthly assemblies, leadership practice, but I think we should just come to be committed to be guest speaker. There's been having actually, we have community members who've been watching and
Wow, awesome. I know somebody's going to have a lot of time on their hands this next school year, so guest speaker number one is right here. Kim?
I actually wanted to go first tonight, but I feel like when it gets to me, I say the same thing.
Well, that's why we feel around here. Oh, yes, at the front.
The same thing, but summer program went really well. Because they're excited to be there and we typically have about fifty-five each day and they show up with smiles and if you remind them walking points, but they're excited to be there. We actually have CPM after our summer program. We have a handful of students staying for CPM and that's going really well. Some of them we transport in and some of them stay from, from our summer program for CPM. The building's busy. I've actually had to tell a few staff, like, I appreciate that you're such a learner and you want to be involved in all this professional development, but you have to take a little bit of time as well. So, but it's busy. There's professional development every day in the building. The Capitol Project, I'm excited for you guys to be there on the fifteenth to kind of see how everything's come together. It's, it looks really great and I can see all the different crews coming in to put their final touches on it. Karen and I were with some crew the other day and it looks, I'm super excited for you guys to be there. Our kiddos went to Vex Park for storytime today. We were going on a little summer field trip and it was nice and short and sweet and they had a great time with that. Our assistant principal would be here, but she, she has jumped right in, but she is on her honeymoon right now. So she'll come back tomorrow and she's going to continue to hit the ground fighting. So starting to, already for the fall and shifting into next school year, but yeah, it's going well.
Awesome. Jay, what do you got for us?
So this week, we launched final forms. It has taken place of athletic registration from Power School. I think Levi and Adam for, for really helping communicate this to the community. The, you know, benefits are just automated communication, ease of access. Coaches and for hopefully parents and students, once they get used to the system. The initial sign up takes a little bit longer than the following files. Usually when you check the boxes after you do the big one. So all the communication is going to be run through email. We have had several parents reach out, but so far they're pretty good. We've got over a hundred and twenty that have signed up. So it's going better than I thought. Other than that, our summer camps have been well attended. This week's basketball and softball, next week's baseball and track and field, which is a pretty big one. Weather's been cooperating for the most part, other than the air quality last week. And summer swim starts a new cycle, two and three week cycles. We do have spots available. That's been greatly attended. So next week, we'll start three more weeks of that. If anyone has anyone who has any children that want to go in, that's still open. Start of fall sports, August twenty-first, so it's right around the corner. And other head coaches are holding over the practices, their weight rooms opening at ten. And, you know, it's coming quickly here, so. Exciting and a little I want to say impressive, because it's interesting, but.
Eric, awesome. Well, thank you all. Appreciate that. Alright, so we got board of education message next. Christian?
Alright.
Lucky C won.
Yeah, I see what you guys did saying you're, um, no, it's exciting to hear all the updates and I commend you guys all and your hard work. And of course, I know, um, you know, a lot goes into everything that you twenty guys do. So at first I want to thank you on behalf of, you know, me and the board and my family for all your hard work and, um, see, it's exciting to hear about the playground being turfed. We're excited to go for that, that would use for a second here. Summer swim, I'll be trying to send, send some little rider boys over there if I can. And, um, yeah, I mean, other than that, just thank you to all the staff members that have been continuing working throughout the summer. And I know we're getting close to, you know, school picking back up, believe it or not, but, um, yeah, it's, it's going by very fast. And if it's okay, I wanted to offer my thoughts and prayers for those families that are, you know, suffered a tragic loss this weekend. So my hearts are with each one of you and your family. So that's all.
Appreciate it. Tracy?
Um, I also like hearing about all the activities. I mean, I see it all on Facebook, you know, thanks to Levi, I see and hear, but I like hearing more details when we're here in a meeting, the things that everybody explains. But also like to thank everybody for their hard work and their, the programs that are continuing going on for the children. That's exciting. Also like to, um, see my, you know, wants to treat family. And I guess that's it.
Dave?
It's tougher. It seems like you get, when you get down as part of the table, some stuff you write down. So it gets easier. Then you're scrambling, but no, it's the same thing. Just, uh, I don't know what you guys all said. It's amazing how quick some flies, a few weeks ago, we had graduation and now all of a sudden the theme across the board is school's starting quicker than we want to. Just want to thank all you guys for, you know, going through the dog days of summer continuing and planning and the year sneaks up no matter what. Pretty soon we'll be talking about snow and Kerry skiing. The, uh, the other thing is it's just, uh, same as them thoughts and prayers out to the families that have been pretty involved this past weekend. So that's just a, a tragedy on that. It just reminds us all how precious life is. Oh, that's, that's all.
Thank you, Dan.
Dale? Yeah, I'd also like to thank everybody for the hard work over the summer. I know what it takes to get the next school year up and going. So I, I know all the efforts you guys put in there are well worth it. So thank you very much. And Erin, yes, it is, uh, arguably it's going to be August, alright, but I know I have one more month to get through. So. So I also want to pass along my condolences and lots of prayers for families and friends that have been affected by recent tragedy. It's tough to do. I'm hardworking and I'm actually. Thank you.
Really, you know. Uh, likewise, you know, Michael Knowles is going to the families. It's a tough situation. Her community suffered a lot. But you always, you know, you always see your way through it. You know, we will see our way through it. The families will see it, but it takes a lot of help. Uh, Dr. Beeler is going to talk about a little bit of that help in a, in a moment here. We are providing services. I know there was a little bit of miscommunication on the social media post that said we were only offering help on Monday, but the reality is we're offering help every single day. And Dr. Beeler, we're going to do a little bit about that. But yeah, help is there. Anybody, reach out, talk to somebody, you know, everyone copes with things differently. You just have to find that, that means the outlet. You have to find somebody to talk to and we'll provide whatever services we can. Um, yeah, thank you. Thank you all. You know, I think every board meeting, I say it, thank you. You know, you guys are appreciated. The tireless work, you know, I know, I know it doesn't end and it's not just a nine to five job, you know, the work continues on well beyond that. Weekends, whatever, even if you're off during the summer, the work continues. I see it. I see it at my house, you know, it just goes on. And I know there's a lot of stuff that we have to look at. What did we do last year? Now you're getting into that. What are we going to do this coming year? You know, a lot of planning, a lot of prep, you know, a lot of looking back. But it's all appreciated. Every single staff member, we appreciate everything you guys do from the board. Absolutely. You know, I speak for all of us when I say we appreciate every single one of you. Thank you. Um, other than that, just enjoying the summer. Been some nice weather, a couple of showers here and there, but yes, I am looking forward to the snow, especially with this heat coming this week. You know, it's ninety degrees, doesn't, doesn't sit well with me. I'd rather have about nine degrees. Um, but that's about it.
Thank you. A little over a week ago, I had the opportunity to attend the How Well that was held at Vex Park. Awesome event, brought the family down. It was terrific. I wanted to just extend our gratitude for the collaboration that occurs between the district and the Seneca Nation. I think we did a really nice job or the Seneca Nation didn't, we were able to help with that. I just wanted to extend a thank you to clearly our Buildings and Grounds Department. That's quite a big lift for them for really many months prior in planning, but especially the week before and a few days afterwards. I think everything went well. There's always room for improvement, but I really wanted to say thank you to those individuals who helped out with that. Also, just a reminder, our CA BOSIS has experienced what they're referring to as an interruption in IT services. That's what they're calling it, but most likely there was an attack, a cyber attack, and it's just good for us to know that they were able to manage that very quickly. Their services are coming back online just within a matter of a few days. I know our district and then last week I just attended another session on topics that aren't really the most interesting and exciting for school people, which is cybersecurity. But it is real. It's always a matter of not if it's going to happen, but when. What I did learn last week is that our district is doing quite a bit to make sure that we're proactive and prepared if and when that event does occur. So it's important just as a reminder for everyone to be vigilant and not click on those emails that you don't know who they came from or what's inside of them. A quick little update, August thirty-first is our bus rodeo. All individuals are invited to come out and drive a bus around in the parking lot. I've learned over and over again that it is more important to be safe in the bus than to go fast. I know I had one on time, but apparently not running over the cones is more important. So I will do my best this year to acquire a top-notch spot in the competition, but I do have fun making those move quickly. On a much more serious note, the, our community here experienced a very tragic loss over the weekend and the effects of that will be felt for many weeks, months and years to come. I wanted to speak a little bit to the services and that we're providing for those individuals, both students, staff and all community members. And make a note that our crisis team, the incident occurred around ten thirty or ten forty-five on Saturday night. By one thirty on Sunday morning, the team was already active, looking to determine what can we do to ensure that we can provide services to the Salamaca community. Nine o'clock on Sunday, they met to prepare Monday morning. They met as a team. We had our own district, social workers, psychologists, counselors, administrators in, involved in the planning and preparation to identify how we can help identify those individuals that would be most affected, what we need to do to continue operations and provide services to the students and staff that were here Monday. As well as to identify who we needed to reach out to, to do some welfare checks. We also had a new group that joined us called HOPE, which are animal assisted crisis response dogs that came in. These are highly trained dogs to assist in high stress situations. Those services, as Mr. John mentioned, will continue essentially indefinitely. At this point in time, our family school liaisons are the point of contact. We have their information, which is on right front and center on our website. It's also posted through social media. Those are their district cell phones. You don't have to call a family liaison that you know. You can call or text and they will coordinate or provide assistance to you within a matter of hours. And I encourage anyone in the community that just needs somebody to talk to, to use those services, avail themselves of it. There is no end point for when we'll discontinue that. So that will be ongoing. And I also want to encourage our employees. There's one thing that is special about Salamaca is that our employees build very strong relationships with our students and it's not like other districts where that relationship might last a semester or a year. These go for many years and when we have a loss like we experienced over this past weekend, it's both family and loved ones, but our staff as well. So staff, please feel free to reach out to the family school liaisons. We also have an employee assistance program, which is new this year, which is free of charge to any of our employees or family members, and I encourage you to utilize that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Beeler. Um, I actually did have one, wanted to get an update on the construction. I think Chris already mentioned the ongoing construction, but and I think Kim also mentioned that prospect. So can we get a real
Sure, we absolutely.
How things are going and what we can expect moving into the next month?
Yes. If you take a look around, it's a, we'll call it a very dynamic situation. It sounds impressive. We have identified on this particular main campus, really the entire front of the high school and the main loop here, depending upon the day, is under various forms of construction. Most recently, they did a sort of a live tap or into the water main out in front. So you'll see a excavator out there with a big hole. They were basically teeing or branching off of the water main today. So that is influencing or impacting the availability to come in this door. We usually have a sign out there, which simply indicates where, how to safely enter the building. For the most part, the general rule is if you're coming to the Iroquois campus, please enter through Seneca Intermediate School. That is open and available and you can access the rest of the building through there. We see the steel still being going up for the addition to the high school, which will become the administrative offices. That will occur for about the next week and a half. We'll then move to the pouring of the concrete. That will be at a point we refer to as substantial completion in May of twenty twenty-four. The Native American Suite is undergoing constant work. Just ask anyone who's down in that area, whether it's the crushing sound of tile being broken or impact guns that are breaking up the floors. The Native American Suite is scheduled to be completed in February of twenty-four or so, in about seven months or so. They're optimistic that they're ahead of schedule, so we might see entrance into that over the Christmas break. So things are going very well there. Prospect is scheduled for what we refer to as substantial completion in mid-August. That is why we will be having our August fifteenth meeting over there. There is some work going on, ongoing on the facade. But there was a couple of delays primarily due to some installation. Call it confusion, I guess, at this point. So, but that is not structural, that is cosmetic, and we're anticipating that that will be completed by the opening of school. If not, it'll look significantly better, but might filter into the second or third week of September is the rate we're going. We have regular safety meetings and updates and the staff is consistently made aware of where the active construction is going on, but we're targeting the beginning of the school year or the opening for a brand new look to the front of the high school, which we are very excited about. Thank you.
And just the entrances will be done before school starts?
So we will be able to utilize the entrances by the beginning of school. Some of the, I refer to the Thunder Mac panels. So these are panels that are similar to the panels that are in the back of the steam wing. Those have to be field measured before they can be ordered. So installation has to go in. They measure that they come actually from Austin. Those have to be field measured before they can be ordered. So installation has to go in. They measure that they come actually from Austria. So we know that some of the cosmetic, uh, panels will not be here by the opening of school. Uh, so we're targeting somewhere around October to middle of October for the entire cosmetics to be done. Uh, but the, uh, entrances will be functional for the beginning of school.
The doors will work.
The doors will work. Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. Yes. It's good to hear.
All right. Any other questions on anything? Or nothing? All righty. I'll move on to the consent agenda. Uh, we have item A is the board minutes from the last meeting, July eleventh meeting. Item B, we have, uh, travel conference and overnight trips. We have Amish along going to. Instructional coaches conference, Karen McGara going to ASBO International Annual Conference. Uh, Michelle Red Eye students and then Aaron Miller, Michelle Red Eye, Andrea Cook, Rebecca Hill, Gabrielle Papa, Paige Papa. Rachel Wolf, Catherine Rogers, all going to the N I E A conference, um, Albert Turkey. And. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion. My Dale, second. Second by Christian. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we have nothing under old business and we'll want to new business. Um. Item A, we have, uh, contract for Berkshire Farm Center and Services for Youth. Uh, he has all that upon recommendation of the superintendent. The Berkshire Farm Center and Services for Youth Memorandum of Understanding to Establish a Partnership Between Salamanca City Central School District and Berkshire Farm Center and Services for Youth. In order to support the current contract for the Turnbull program. That will reduce the number of youth truants is. That are referred to the program effective July twelfth, twenty twenty-three through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, we approve and superintendent of schools be authorized to execute the agreement approved. Do I have a motion? Motion. Motion by Tracy. Second. Second by Ted. Any questions? All in favor? I, I oppose. Okay, motion carried. Hey, item D, we have declare surplus. Uh, be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the attached list of kindergarten grade three reading program. Journeys materials be declared surplus and be properly disposed of, be approved. Do I have a motion? Motion, second. My Dale, second by Christian. Any questions? All in favor? I, any opposed? Yes, motion carried. Great. Next up, we have item C, create positions. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent and as a result of the changes within the district, following position created and be approved. One cook manager, thirty-five thousand, forty thousand dollars C S U. Two records clerk, sixteen dollars per hour, grant position. Three school psychologist, assistant director for special, special education, salary experience based S A S O. Do I have a motion? Motion. Motion by Ted. Second. Second by Dale. Do we have any questions? Dr. Miller, I'm going to give a quick rundown of the position.
Um, the cook manager position is a addition to the leadership that will occur primarily in prospect, um. This will allow, uh, Mr. Haley to spend some time at the high school where he is. Primarily, uh, centered and the position will then be a sort of a go-to, uh, person for those individuals that are prospect. The records clerk is a, uh, grant that Mrs. McGara has received to provide, uh, archival of our current records or a lot of scanning and digitization. And the school psychologist assistant director for special education. Um, this is a position that's. This isn't director for special education, but specifically we're looking for a school psychologist, um, to take that administrative role. Over the past several years, we have seen a vast increase in the number of students that are referred to special education. And we also have the need for an additional school psychologist. And while this school psychologist may be a member of the S A S unit, so there's some things. There, they can't do, uh, because of, uh, contractual. Stipulations. Um, this will allow our current school psychologists to be able to spend more time. Working with teachers and working with students in classrooms, um, and less time sitting in C S E meetings.
Any other questions? Oh, okay. We had a motion by Dale and a second by Christian. All in favor? All right. Repose? Okay, motion carried. All right, item D, we have our Board of Education Standing Committees for twenty-three, twenty-four. Um. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following Board of Education Standing Committees for twenty-three, twenty-four school year be approved. I'm not going to go through all that and try to give some content. Um, can I have a motion? Wait, Tracy? Second. Second by Dale. Any questions? All in favor? I, I oppose. Motion carried. Congratulations, everyone, on your committee appointments. Um. Thanks, man. Good job, man. Good work. All right. Item E, we have the bid for the trash removal and recycling services. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent based on the bids received and recorded on July sixth, twenty twenty-three, for trash removal and recycling services. The bid is in accordance with the contract documents and is therefore recommended to accept the bid and award to the contract to. Award the contract, the lowest responsive and responsible bidders. Reach their waste services incorporated in the amount of nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars. Do I have a motion? Motion. Okay, my Christian. Second. Second by Dale. Any questions? All in favor? I, I. Opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right, item F, the bid for the shuttle van. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent based on the bids received and recorded on July twentieth, twenty twenty-three for a shuttle van. The bid is in accordance with the contract documents. It is therefore recommended to accept the bid and award the contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidders. New bus sales LLC in the amount of eighty-four thousand six hundred dollars. Do I have a motion for the shuttle van? Motion. Motion by Ted. Second. Second by Dale. Any questions? Dr. Beeler.
Sure.
What are we using the shuttle van for?
So this is a fancy shuttle van. Um, this will be, we're going to, I think, begin to transition a little bit into, um, this type of a van. Which is basically a hybrid between a traditional minivan and a small school bus. That's what he said. Um, and it will be used similar to the way that we typically use a small school bus right now, but it is significantly more comfortable. Um, and will be utilized to transport students, um, not only to events, uh, far away, but within the district. I'll just make a note that it sounds kind of silly, but it's actually kind of fortunate that we are able to get one. These are, this is off of a state bid, but the shuttle vans are actually kind of difficult to acquire right now with the supply chain. So I know and wanted to say thanks to both Mrs. McGara and Mr. Finch for taking time. They. I think is this where Bob traveled to other places to try and find this? Right. So actually finding one took quite a bit of work. Uh, so we're for. It's several fortunate to be able to spend eighty-five thousand dollars on a van, but. In today's time, I guess we're fortunate to be able to even get one.
Again.
Oh.
Wow.
Okay. Well, thank you, guys. Any other questions? Excited to see you again. News. Hmm. So, all right. So I had a, what was it? Motion by Ted, second by Dale, all in favor? I, I, we opposed? Hey, that motion carried. All right. So next up, we have item G, a bid for Microsoft SharePoint Development Implementation Support and Training Services. Be resolved that upon recommendation of the superintendent based on bids received and recorded on July twentieth, twenty twenty-three for Microsoft SharePoint Development. Implementation support and training services. The bid is in accordance with the contract documents. It is therefore recommended to accept the bid and award the contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidders. Business technology professionals in the amount of sixty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And I get a motion.
Okay.
Second by Tracy, second by Dale. Any questions? No?
Okay, you were thinking. I was just wondering, because I remember her mentioning, I, some stuff earlier, some updates. I didn't know if it had anything to do with that. That was all. Does it? Anything that.
Yeah.
Let me do. Yeah, everybody wants this back again. Sorry. I'll have mercy, but this has been a project of hers for a while, um, because we had to put it out for an RFP, but SharePoint is a exceptionally powerful Microsoft tool. That I think is extremely underutilized in school settings. Uh, it will increase the efficiency. Of our district and the departments that will transition to it significantly, but I'll let Tracy talk a little more if you want to have a little detail or.
Yeah. I'm really looking forward to this because it creates an intro web, which means that when people are logged into their account, they automatically have access to all the information in the district. Whether their home or wherever, once they log in, they do. Um, it will give us, uh, websites that are specific to people that work here. So if you're looking for tech information, you come to the tech websites or intro web. And it will give you all the information you need for ordering software, for requesting materials, um, how to do things, how do I do this, uh, training videos, all the pieces. That right now we have spread out. Across the district. And when someone comes and says, hey, how do I find this or how do I do that? Everybody scrambles a little bit. It's like, well, you go here, but maybe you go there. No, everything will be in one house. Um, this will help clean up our email as well. Um, I don't know how much you guys get, but I know on a daily basis, I have over a hundred, hundred and fifty emails that flood into my inbox. And this will eliminate anything that's being passed out district wide or building wide. They can post these things. On that site and it will give them access to it. Um, all the inner school mail that we do that are, you know, routine documents that we fill out, all those documents. Um, e-forms will be created and they will, you'll be able to access if I'm looking for something from H R. I go to H R's page and pull the document. I complete it, I hit submit, it goes out to people that need to see it, need to sign it. They do their business and then hit submit and it goes to the next person and right down the line. So. It's creating efficiency and effectiveness within the district and keeping all our stuff inside. So that we are lessening that cybersecurity issue, which. Don't get me started. I, I hate it, but I love to talk about it. So, um, yeah.
Thank you, Mercer. Thank you. That's great. Thank you.
Well, excited. Well.
That's good though. That's great.
Yeah.
Definitely screen my process. Any other questions? Right, we had a motion by Tracy, a second by Dale, all in favor? I, I, opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right, next we are moving on to personal con- personnel consent agenda. One of the personnel action. Uh, we have, um. Certified classified reservations, we have certified classified F M L A, paid leave absence, unpaid leave absence, we have certified classified appointments. Uh, we have substitutes, we have, uh. Student teacher internship, this is. Is that intern?
By student teaching. Uh, would you know? I have the same. I'll say. I'll say. I'll do.
Oh, all right. Then we have coaching appointments, athletics, um. Yeah, and we'll talk about a few of those. All right, can I get a motion to approve the personnel, uh, cons- or personnel action number one? Motion. Second motion by Ted. Second by, was it Christian? Christian. Hey, any questions on personnel action number one? Yes? All right. All in favor? I, opposed? Okay, that motion is approved. We have personnel action number two, summer appointments. Uh, these are summer positions, monitors and bus drivers. Can I get a motion to approve the summer personnel action, number two, summer appointments? Motion. My Dale, second. Second by Ted. Any questions? All in favor? I, opposed? Yeah, motion carried. Uh, so do we have any introductions?
We do. We have two individuals who are joining us virtually through Zoom. Um, first off, I'll let Mr. Long introduce Maggie.
All right, Mrs. Tingley, she's been with, uh. First night in the high school office for approximately a year. Um, and in her short time with us, she's going to be leaving a big hole. We'll definitely miss her, but not too much because. On the flip side of that, she's filling a big hole. We had, uh, Mrs. Rovetti retire this past year. Um, Mrs. Tingley had talked to us about her hearts with the kids and she wants to be more involved with students, which was apparent with her interactions in the office. Um, so she is going to be our new T A, high school. And it gives me a great pleasure to introduce her in that capacity, but sadness that I'm losing her in the office, but I'm happy for her and her journey. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, do you have a speech prepared?
No.
Oh, no? Okay. All right, well, thank you. Congratulations, babe.
Thank you.
Next up is, uh, Emma Telesco. So I had the opportunity to meet Emma, actually for the first time, I believe, on the lacrosse field when she was assisting with girls lacrosse. Uh, so I'd like to welcome her myself, but at this point I'll also turn it over to Mrs. Beaver because she will be at Seneca.
Hi, she will. Well, I'm a second time being a field player, can't wait to perform fourth grade in fall. And then she offered to teach in the. Salala, um, in the spring, and I know with a lacrosse coaching and we truly enjoyed having her at Seneca Intermediate. She, uh, has a strong passion for children and learning. Um, and she doesn't bring with her a super positive attitude, tons of ambition, a lot of drive. Um, she excels in classroom management. She built super strong relationships with students. Um, you know, but most importantly, she has a really strong desire to be at Salamanca. And I think at the end of the interview process and the hiring and all of that, I think her exact words to me were, how can I get my classroom? You know, that's just the passion that we were excited to have. So we're so lucky to have you at our Seneca family and welcome you.
Right.
Bye. Thank you, everybody. I just want to say a quick thank you for this opportunity and like, um, Nikki Beaver said, I'm very excited to get into the classroom as soon as possible.
All right, also. All right, now we need your speech.
Um, that's all I have.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Is that?
That's it.
That's all we have?
Yeah.
All right, uh, so that was it for the main agenda. The next item is just the board information reports discussions, um. Under the upcoming events, I believe Dr. Beeler already mentioned on the fifteenth, the next board of education meeting that is going to be held at Prospect Elementary School. Um, it says in the open play space area.
So that'll be in the new, uh, steam wing edition. It has a open play space area. Yeah. You'll know where, where it is.
Okay, hopefully we can find it.
That's right.
All right, um, we also, uh, we also had our high school yearbook, uh, distribution. Hopefully all the students will pick the yearbooks up. Everyone's able to get them and. Other than that, that's it for tonight. Any final party comments? Okay, we take a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion. Motion by Dale. Second, second by Christian. Any comment? Question? No, all in favor? I, I oppose. Okay, motion carried. We are adjourned. All right, thank you all. Thank you.